Welcome to our multi-town Bronson, Mobile, Lawton Town Hall meeting. I don't see a plaque where we can have the flexible agents like we normally do, but we're going to start with introductions. I'm Rocky Witt with Woodbury County Board of Supervisors.
Keith Reddick, Woodbury County Board of Supervisors.
Matthew Ogden, Supervisor.
Harvey Palma, Supervisor.
Jeremy Taylor's on a trip to the Pentagon. He's doing some military chaplain awards, I think, if I remember right. He's one of the few that's like, he's getting some recognition nationally for his contributions to the Army Guard and his being a chaplain for the military. So can I get introductions from any and all city council and mayors and such that are here? Hold on, this guy just handed up.
You're the last city councilman?
Jason Garnian, Bronson City Council.
Jim O'Ginn, Bronson City Council.
Jamie McBronson, City Council.
Tony Thompson, Mayor of Bronson.
Jim Fisher, Mayor of Mobile.
Dale Erickson, Mayor of Lawton.
Do you have your council members come with you guys?
Yeah.
Carly James, City Clerk of Lawton.
Jared Bauttusius, Councilman of Lawton.
All right. This is going to be kind of an informal meeting tonight, but do any of the mayors or city council members have anything they'd like to expand on for progress or other issues going on within their towns?
City of Mobile, now we want to start to work on three new streets. Well, one new cul-de-sac and we'll replace two other streets, sorry, next week. We just wanted to add 24 homes built in the last four years. We want to add two new homes, build permits, about two homes going up right now, and then we have to build two more houses. We want to add now also have a permit for a fourplex, a carpal building. And then after the cul-de-sac is built, starting in 2019, we're going to have five duplexes and one triplex, so we're pretty excited about it.
These all are going to be up around the golf course or in that area or is that new?
Uh, one's going to be around the golf course and another one, Doug, is going to be in a ridge and then just directly west of the fairgrounds is where it's going to be. It's usually a hay field there and that's where the cul-de-sac goes.
Okay.
As far as Lawton, we've got, we do have one building permit out there for a new house and one for a duplex. A duplex has been started. The one house has all been staked out, just needs to be pulled out and go for it. We hardly have any lots left in town to build on, so we're looking to expand them somewhere. Talking to neighbors, talking to people that might have some land, seeing what we can come up with. So that's what we're going to talk to them and see if we can get some money somehow.
How's your restaurant doing?
Restaurant has been packed every night. It's doing very well. He's closed off every night, but Monday night, he's open on Mondays. He serves great breakfast, good lunch, and evidently everybody likes the supper because it's, it's, this main street is lined every night. We're working on, oh, we did, we worked, we added on to our fire station, trying to get all the fire trucks under one roof. And we're in the process of grading the alley behind it, parking slab and stuff to get that done. Hopefully that'll be poured next week because the big pancake breakfast is on the 15th September, would like to have that done.
Yeah, that's right. Glad you brought that up because I got that fire in the mail the other day.
And we have, we've done a lot of upgrades with our sewer treatment plants and that stuff, getting stuff that has been neglected over the next last three or four years. Finally got, finally got things going where, where things need to be. Yep, starting working on a lot of strawberries also.
Have a right hand, Carlos?
Yes, yes. We kind of go right through.
Anything from Bronson?
Yeah, City of Bronson, we just got done with a new generator for our disstation that just got completed, I think, within the last month. Been working on development for City of Bronson. Just more of a beginning phase of that. We also were looking, hoping to get somewhere to expand our town. We have some ideas out, council is working at that also. And then another thing is we just had a whitetail fiber town network just got into town here, so they're starting to hook that up this week here and next, you know, the next few weeks, so.
Okay. Anything from the council members? Judiciously quiet. All right, well.
No reason to be cautious, you outnumber the supervisors.
Well, I mean, it depends on how long you want to sit here and listen to things from the county. I'll give kind of an update on where, on where we are and then I'll ask a couple of our esteemed elected and appointed officials what's new out there too. Rolling Hills from Sioux Rivers is progressing nicely. Looks like July 1st, we will be full members of that new mental health region, joining the seventh county to be an eight county region over there. One of the big things, one of the big expenses this year, a couple of months ago, was Tyler. We're switching over to a new software. I'm sure Michelle can explain it far better than I can, but it's, it's overdue. It's a new software system that'll probably, at minimum, one of the better things about it, it'll cut down a lot of duplicative entries for, for multiple different entities, mid-treasury office, partners office for taxing purposes, such like that. And it will almost certainly reduce errors because of the multiple times that some of these entries have to be put in. So that was kind of a capital improvement, I think, Dennis. That was around 500,000. But it was getting to the point where the state was telling us that if we didn't do something, they're going to start fining us, stopping them when I'm wrong, because we're using such an adequate system and they couldn't, they didn't have the access to it. So moving along with that, so we're hoping at best that, like I said, it cuts down errors, saves a lot of time for our employees and so forth. And while I can't take credit for it, I want everybody to know that bridge out there on 141 is done. Is anybody not happy about the bridge or, because I know there was a lot of comments on that and it seems like we, the weather's been hitting us from nine different angles lately, so for the moment, that's all I got. Mr. Palma, do you have anything?
I'm here to listen. I'll let Matt go first.
All right.
Well, all right. Thanks everyone for coming out. It's great to get in front of you and be with you and this is something good the board does every, every quarter, every few months. And it's always good to bring our county officials out with us so they can answer questions as well and see if they have any updates you're interested in too. So I'm also here to listen, to see what we can improve on as a county. Rocky covered some of the major recent items. I would be surprised if we didn't have any comments on infrastructure at a town hall meeting, so we're happy to have our assistant county engineer with us, Ben Kussler. And would, would anticipate that with the county's focus on bridges over the last five years, that having reduced the number of deficient bridges successfully, that we would use our time and efforts towards our gravel and the quality and the quantity of that gravel. So that's something that the board is going to be looking at in the next several years, especially with increased funding made available from CF over the next 20 years stepping in. So that's what I have right now.
Good.
I guess in general, not as much, you know, little things going on with the county because we have, you know, the big software change takes up a lot of revenue. Another thing was the police training centers should be opening soon, our sheriff's office, no one, no one from the sheriff's office is here today, so that is, well, I guess, are you under that, how far under that are you?
Not as much as.
You get to wear a badge and then, so, well, anyway, they had the new training center that was built out of Prairie Hills. It's essentially a real nice machine shed and it's next to the shooting range. It would be a facility they could do training and store equipment and use where.
Have large classrooms.
Have large classroom. They can work with other entities across the state to do training for other departments. And then also the existing Prairie Hills facility was getting so expensive to maintain that building the new place was actually going to be cheaper maintaining the old. So in the long run, it's a net savings there for the county as well. You know, a lot of engineering projects, you know, bridges across the county, and I will let Ben talk to those if anyone has any questions on them. I'm German, I'm not totally here to listen, I'm just here to say I'm kidding.
Well, and just to speak for Jeremy Taylor since he cannot be here, but he wanted me to pass along to you his regrets, he's unable to be here. He is selected as one of 20 army chaplains nationally to attend an emerging leaders symposium at the Pentagon this week. Otherwise, he would be here. He's been working on secondary roads issues with me and wanted me to share a little bit on that tonight. So do you want me to expand on that as of right now or do you want to, you want to wait?
Go ahead.
All right. Jeremy and I have been working with Dennis Butler, our budget analyst, and Martin Arrow, along with Ben, of course, on a plan to bring our gravel roads back to a level unforeseen for 30 years. What's that mean? That means our gravel roads have not had the attention that they deserve, nor have they had the money put into them. And there's some other underlying factors as well. But we are working with Dennis and we're going to be, hoping that we can get this done in seven, maybe realistically 10 years with some of the latest conversations we've had. Our plan will be unveiled next Tuesday, but it's really a compilation of both our ideas along with the input that we're getting as far as options. These include future CF revenue to our various budget funds. For example, 10% as well as the amount of the revenues tax fund will inevitably come from the CF valuation. Additionally, we're looking at some rural meetings in which we could use a special levy. This is not set in stone, these are discussion points, such as we're done with the bridge levy, maybe at half rate, which could bring in around 650,000 annually, but would only be done with public input. Other ideas we're looking at include TIF options and utilizing more local option sales tax. Our goal, and make no mistake about it, will be to rebuild the gravel road system that was degraded for the last 30 years. I asked, I toured a couple of them at times, most recently about two weeks ago with Mark in areas down by Hornet, Smithland, Anthem. There's some problem, problem areas down there. So I asked Mark to look back and find out what is different. Among other things, Mark said that in the past, every mile of every gravel road in this county was paved, or sorry, regravel every year. Around 30 years ago, they stopped doing that. Now, I'm sure Ben can tell you, as long as Rep. Jamie as well, there's a lot of people in here that have roads that have seen some degradation. They went to what they call spot repairs or spot rock, if that's right. Does that sound right, Ben?
Yeah, basically a maintenance rock.
Maintenance rock, because we want to maintain about a four to five inch rock base and some of our operators have been making do with what they have. Obviously, the price of gravel has gone up, so we don't have as much gravel as we've had in the past. We have not afforded secondary roads an appropriate increase. Couple that with some of the factors such as greatly increased semi-traffic on our rural roads. The equipment that I see rolling down these roads, paved or not, is not smaller than it was 30 years ago. So this is not a problem that happened overnight, but it's a problem that we're going to start working on. So we are looking for, for answers, we're looking for the money to do it. And again, we've been talking with Mr. Butler, Mark and Ben, and I don't promise anything's going to be repaired overnight, but we saw some spots that genuinely need some help. I lived on a gravel road, I drove on a gravel road, so I know what a bad gravel road looks like. So I want everybody to understand that we're here to get these roads fixed. We're here to repair the problem. Again, I'm not promising, nor is anybody trying to promise that this is going to happen overnight, but it's not something we're going to let go of. So that said. Anybody else have anything?
I'm glad we have these meetings, I feel like we're working on. Of course, I've heard of that. And it's long overdue. I'd like to hear what we can work with you folks on, what you're looking at, what you would like us to work with. Can't believe nobody has this.
Jim Alexander, Department of Smithland. And I appreciate what you have to say. Also, I wanted to echo Matthew's sentiments, that appreciation for coming out here, having your meeting out here, I think that's great. I appreciate that and I want to make that known right in front of us. I appreciate you all doing that. And I appreciate your comments, other than those nasty words, special levy, does that mean like a tax?
Did I mention that nothing's set in stone?
Yes, sir, you did. But I just want to make sure it's a levy, that's like a tax.
Well, remember, we had a bridge levy. Do you remember we did that in the past with a five inch levy for a bridge?
No, sir, I wasn't paying that close of attention when you talked about years per capita. Have y'all looked at, as your engineer or your assistant engineer, have y'all looked at the, the cost savings from, from ceasing, cease and desist hauling the sand, the blow sand out? And I, and I say this with, just a week or two ago, y'all covered our roads with that worthless blow sand with a little bit of rock in it, and then we get a rain and we're out there, we don't have, our roads are muddled because of that worthless blow sand. So my question is, have y'all looked at the cost savings of stopping hauling that stuff out? The cost savings of not having to clean out road ditches every so many years because that's all washing down in there? And then looking at the cost of bringing in good rock, the cost savings of bringing in good rock and not having to haul out so much because you're not bringing that worthless blow sand out? And, and those cost savings, have y'all looked at that yet?
Yes.
And what's the numbers look like? Do you have anything, any recommendation, any reports on that yet?
I do not yet. Do you have anything, Ben?
Basically to haul it. I know this county aggregate is quite expensive. You do it trucking, as you might understand. There's an aggregate in close proximity, where it's 25, 50 a ton in the rail, that's a court site material, comes from Dell Rapids and trained out to the downtown terminal and then it has to truck to the sources we dump it. We also looked at some limestone alternatives. The problem with limestone is you have to go quite a distance to find something that isn't soft and you need something a little more durable. But even the closest area would be the Logan test and just the trucking itself puts you above $30 a ton. You have to pay a round trip unless you got to do something back home. But limestone, the yellow road is about $11 a ton at, at the morning. And the highest around $5.95 here. And a truck gravel aggregate, a three I aggregate, which is the best, most durable aggregate in the state of Iowa.
Now, a couple of months ago, when the meeting was at Hornet, prior to the meeting, I had visited with the county engineer in Manona County, third force county in the state from what I've read. Their roads are much, much better. They indicated, the gentleman, the engineer there indicated at that time that, that where they got theirs from, three different sources, higher quality rock than this blow sand that we're getting dumped on. And that those mines, those sources were looking to expand and rail shipment was available. So have you all looked into that aspect of it yet?
And actually, he is purchasing gravel from the same source that we get from up here, like his sources. I don't know if you told him that or not.
Which source is that?
The Wright pit, down by Anthem, through Allen.
He, he mentioned that they were getting some from there. And, and how about, so have you all looked at those other sources, the red rock and the white rock, I think was coming from Sioux Falls or something?
Yeah, that's the, the court site material that comes from Dell Rapids, basically, through Everest and his rails, this is a city, they have the rail, that's a $25, or at least $25.50 a ton right now to pick it up.
And so again, the question becomes factoring that, those costs in versus this stuff that they're bringing out, which we do not want because it is worthless. And then the savings from not having to clean those road ditches out. So how all those numbers work, I don't know. I just know what you're doing ain't working.
Well, I saw some pretty good gravel on your road a couple of weeks ago.
Really? Well, come out, I'll tell you what, when the meeting's over, follow me home and you can, I'll, I'll help you look for it, but I sure haven't seen any.
Well, it looked like it was, there was quite a bit of it dumped on it south of the highway going towards your house.
Yes, sir, there's a lot dumped there, but it's that blow sand, when you get a rain, it washes away. It just washes away.
And actually, just to expand when you come up, blow sand is actually a material that's from the reserve river bottom, it has a clay, a silt-y clay, a lot of it, they actually put buildings under some of the structure down by Fort Neil. This material does not have blow sand in it. It has fine sand which makes up the gradation and take the place of some particles, so that it's, you can bite, bite together and make a fraction of the surface. Now, I understand what you're trying to get with terminology that comes off the road, but it is a pure sand, it has an aggregate, there's not a blow sand material in it.
And, and I'll submit to your, to your opinion on it there, but we don't need sand, we need rock.
Well, sand is part of the gravel makeup that you do. One of our biggest problems is the silt in our soils. When you put a gravel on a gravel road, the silt migrates up there and actually acts as a, it's almost like a liquid material when it rains. It lubricates the gravel, it gives the appearance the gravel's poor, that comes from having a small layer of gravel. The higher the deeper the gravel, the less chance that the silt has to migrate out of the surface and lubricate the gravel. That's what we would get to as a gravel base.
A, a rock base? I'm not sure.
Well, it's a rock base, it's a beautiful thing, but it has the CF in front of it, the whole road thing. You're talking about 600,000 dollars.
Sir, I'm talking about one mile away from my farm in Manona County, where they have good solid roads, even when it rains. So I invite any of you, Matthew's been out, we took him around last winter, and, and I'd invite you gentlemen out, anybody wants to come out, and I'll show you what I'm talking about. And show me where I'm wrong, show me where I'm missing it, I'll be gladly, I'll gladly be corrected, but I know this, when it rains, it's a muddy mess out there, so.
Any other public comments?
Sure. You know, on the, like, when I was talking with, with some of the roads, I lived down on Buchanan Avenue for 27 years in Gunnford Township. You know, when, when those roads were put in, there was five farmsteads on the six wives. Now there's houses every 300 feet. You know, so then I understand, that, that makes a mess too. You can't, you got to keep it smooth so people get up and down with their cars, but yet you got to put gravel on it and the hills and stuff, but yeah. But you got a bus driver that goes out there and he says, there's three rocks on Buchanan Avenue, and I says, I got one of them stuck in my tire. That's just a comment. But that, that, you know, that is one of those roads that did so heavily travel, I don't know how you're ever going to keep it halfway decent. You know, I don't care how thick your gravel base is going to be, it's just traveled that much.
Well, with four to five inch rock bases was shown to me, we actually down here by Anthem, and we did one on, on Ida Avenue too, the, the rock base is there, but we've got less gravel that we're trying to trim or, or, what's the right word, Ben? Trying to.
I guess I don't know where you're going with that.
Well, I'm just saying, we, in a nutshell, we've got less gravel than we've had in, in years past because we don't have, we haven't been getting the secondary roads, the amount of money to put back through inflation and various things, but.
The material itself just disappears through maintenance, snow plowing vehicles, you don't set the tires, it's going to fly off the road, that's just a. Sir, with all due respect, when winter time comes, the maintainer does not put his blade down and move any gravel in the winter.
Not supposed to, no.
Right, and he doesn't, and so we're, we're slipping and sliding trying to get out of those hills in the winter time, but the, the maintenance guys, the county guys, they do the best they can with what y'all give them, but you can't make a silk purse out of Sal's ear and that gravel is worthless. It doesn't work, okay?
How long does it take to build up a five inch base?
Well, it already is a five inch base, you need a deeper base to keep that water penetration from coming to the rock.
Yeah, actually, now we, we're lucky we have two, three inches of water places. We, we need at least a three to four inch base if you don't tear up and then you want your two inches of gravel that you can move across the top as you're wearing the service.
You probably have to touch your base once you.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that, but you know, Western Ohio Telephone's been out there and they've been running their trenches and they've been drilling under culverts and stuff. And I hadn't seen a rock yet that they brought up from all that digging and drilling and, and pulling line. I hadn't seen a rock from any kind of base yet, so maybe once upon a time, there was a rock base out there, but it is not there anymore.
Okay. I said this has been a problem, 30 years in the making, we're putting a plan together, we're going to ask for input, we're going to start fixing it, okay? That's all I can tell you tonight. Your, your road's not going to be perfect by Friday morning. I'm just trying to express to you that we understand. There's, every one of us has probably been out there and looked at the problem, we agree. I myself asked Mark to go back 30 years, and he hasn't been here 30 years, to see what changed. So again, this is not something that happened overnight, this didn't just happen since March. I'm trying to get you to come with me here and say we're going to work on it.
Absolutely. I hear what you're saying and no, I didn't come in here thinking that my roads or any of our roads out there are going to get fixed by Friday morning. That's unrealistic, so I'm, I'm with you on that. So my question is, how will you, and I, I accept what you're saying, that y'all recognize the problem and you're going to start dealing with it. So what will that look like as we move forward from here? How will this, you know, meetings or what, how will this, what will that look like, this process of taking care of this 30-year-old problem?
It's going to look like we're going to put more money at the issue, we're going to take care of the labor, we're going to make sure that the roads are better. I don't, I guess I'm not sure what you don't understand.
Okay, what I, what I, what I would like to know, because I'm not a bureaucrat or supervisor or anything on a farm, so I'd like to explain it. What steps will happen from now on? Do you, do you have, from here out, do you, you get another report from the engineer? Do you have, what are these, when do you call these meetings? What is the process that you'll arrive at, at the goal of fixed roads? What will that process in practical terms look like? When will there be meetings? How, you know, do you notify or how? When will there be meetings? How, you know, do you notify or how?
By next January, if that's when the budget meetings would be held. You know, it's the capital improvement side for, for the engineering department. It's gonna take significant amounts of money to do what's being proposed. And I don't know if that means, you know, shifting funds by taking away personnel and putting more money towards the material. If that means a special levy to acquire more material, which would mean, you know, a county-only tax increase that wouldn't affect incorporated rates. I mean, there's, it's gotta be discussed in open session. You just can't, you know, come and say, well, here's the, here's the plan, that's what we're gonna do.
Dennis, do you have a timeframe on when we could have some numbers on the, on the money and potential options for the, for raising money for the product and stuff?
I, I kinda agree with Keith there. It's gonna have to be during the budget time, so probably the earliest, because of budget constraints now, because we don't have the money on hand, probably start next fiscal year. I understand that's, you know, nine months away, 10 months, but there's limits to what we can do and what we have. Can you mention a special levy? This will be summer of the bridge, it'll make where the border went out, met with the rural farmers. The farm railroad explained what it was. It's just like a self-improvement district, but that's just one option. There's other options such as using CF, potential increment money. There's money could be allocated from the 10 cent road use tax that they're getting on this gas from secondary roads. There's a lot of options, but until we get a firm, a somewhat firm price of what this labor's gonna cost and the material's gonna cost and the crush it, it's kinda up in the air right now until we get those numbers. But it's not, it's not gonna happen overnight. It can't be. And I know, and I think you understand that.
But he wanted a new process. I know I said I'd say a list, but I think that would have helped him to say something.
Get something to come out.
I think now's the time to start finding priority roads where we need it first. And have all that done before we find out how much money we have, and then we prioritize. And I think that, we all got the email a while back, how the budget's been cut, how little gravel we've been putting down compared to the past. And if we're gonna fix it, and I'm glad to hear we're working on it, I think we gotta start now going out, finding out what roads, you're not gonna go long first. I think we have to prioritize, find out which ones need it the worst. And we can start that relatively soon. If we have our priorities ready, that way during the budget, when you start figuring out how much money is gonna be available, we can start where it needs it the worst and work our way that way.
And I appreciate what you share. That makes sense, and that's some concrete steps, and I, so I appreciate that. If you really wanna find out where the bad spots are, and yes, I understand they're not all gonna be fixed by Friday or next month, and, and it's a matter of attacking the worst problems, here's my recommendation. Do, just like we did with Matthew when we took him out last winter, I, I called my, actually, my postal, my mail lady stopped and her truck's all covered with mud and, and, and she's, and I said, well, Matthew Um is gonna, he's running for reelection this year. I'll call him up and, and we'll go look at the roads. And she gave me a list, this hill, this spot, that spot, that spot. So if you want an easy, absolutely sure way to find out where the bad spots are, get ahold of the rural mail carriers in Woodbury County, and they will fill your ears with bad spots to address.
I'm sure they have the information, but I'm sure that our blade operators are aware of it too. So I don't think that our county engineer's office is lacking on areas that they're already aware of. They need repair and rebuild it.
I would respectfully disagree on whether the, the maintenance, the blade operators, one of the blade operators that my two thought the roads were great, and maybe things look a little different sitting up in a, in a $200,000 machine or running around in a, in a little pickup truck. So that's my suggestion, do whatever you wish. But that way you can get a boots on the ground from someone who makes their living traversing those roads.
Thanks, that I had thought, I'm thinking about talking to school bus drivers, but I think the rural mail carriers cover more roads.
They, they cover them six days a week. Rain, shine, snow, every day, six days a week.
Do we have any other comments?
Just all the road too. What do you, what do you guys do with the, how do you set up the, or who sets up the floodplains? And how do we get areas out of floodplains?
Yeah, FEMA sets up. It's a designated flood area. We're talking about trying to get developed in the area.
I think that your office probably has some information on that. He could call you at some appointment if there's a certain area.
If you wanna get out of a floodplain with the, that EMS.
Deemed to.
Yeah, it requires a survey. It can't be done, and I, I believe you got some information, right?
Yep.
Are you talking floodplain versus floodway or floodway versus floodplain?
We've got a, we've got a draw that goes through, right through town, and it's all in a floodplain. It's, it's fairly well-contained, and we've had some horrendous rains here the last couple of years. It's never gone out of those banks.
And it's kinda like leads up in Sioux City.
Yeah.
It's all in a floodplain.
Yeah.
It's never flooded.
Right.
And it's just a matter of worst-case million-year flood scenario or whatever that was flooding. About the only way to do that is to redirect the water somehow or underground storm drains, so.
And the web apps that he's talking about are basically some tool that contours and compares accurate as they can be, but they don't, they don't make consideration, there we go.
Has FEMA made it any easier to get out of a floodplain? It's very expensive because you have the.
Perry Creek flood, where water, just high water, sections that were still dry were.
Not allowed to get out of the floodplain.
So when I was on council at Sioux City, Perry Creek Trail Project removed most of the property, but then they came back with a map showing tons of property still in the floodplain. And here we just spent close to $100 million on them flood controls over, you know, 30, 40 years. And they actually hired an engineering firm out of Cedar Rapids that works a lot with hydrology and floodways and floodplains. There's another gal out of Kansas City that does a lot of work. She's actually doing the work for North Sioux City and Union County. You know, I'd have to venture to guess what, what it would cost for, you know, just a small part of a lot, but you know, to do a review, to get a no-ride certificate. So I have a property that's in a floodway, which a floodway, you can't even get a building permit to do any work on it. So if you wanna get from the floodway to the floodplain, you have to get something called a no-ride certificate. And typically, for just a residential lot, they charge around $25,000 to get you the, the work done, to get you a no-ride certificate. So if you multiply that by all the residential lots, it'd be very expensive. But I'm sure there's a cost savings when you're doing more than one, because they're, they're studying an entire area regardless.
Any other public comments?
How you do with the jake break ordinance?
Oh, we're talking to me, you have anybody?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, we're not an enforcement agency, secondary roads, it would be.
Sure.
Fair for.
Well, they, they, you know, we've talked to get one in Lawton. I know they've got one in Mobile. And last time. Yeah, I think last time we talked to Mark is when he. Was that right? They're just gonna go county-wide, you know, enforceable then?
Well, the, the, the right fishing state, it certainly has, it can take ours.
I could tell you, when we put the jake break rule in Sioux City, I was still on the police department and it wasn't a ticket written for it.
Right.
You know, I sit in our office and I hear.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you do.
I think the only answer is to be right. Did you say there wasn't work that's written on that?
I just say it's.
To city, uh, county.
Well, that was, that was the understanding from our, our city lawyer, so that that's where it went to is ended up going to the county, and they were gonna try and get a county-wide jake break ordinance within certain areas, you know? Because if we, if the city put, if the city of Lawton went up, it'd just be from, from city boundary to city boundary. And if you come in from the east on Highway 20, it's, it doesn't do us any good because they're, they're already in town, and you've heard the jake break for the last two miles.
Was that something because of Martin, about he was gonna get back to you?
Um, yeah, I think he did, talked to.
I'll talk to our attorney.
City attorney and see what.
Cause he's the one that told us if he could send it up to the board of supervisors and somebody had to get something and then ask for it.
PJ, was that something Martin brought up to you? Do you remember seeing that?
Never seen it.
I remember, I remember. I remember the email, and I thought it was a little bit up in the air, so I didn't know which direction it was gonna go. Well, like I said, if you can have an ordinance, but if there's not a deputy or, or town cop sitting there right there, it's that kinda, you know, kind of a moot point, so.
I'll mention it to him tomorrow.
I saw Gary wanted to say something. What do you have for us?
Well, just gonna give you an update. I missed the morning meeting. I'm Gary Brown with Woodbury County Emergency Services. Just wanted to let you know, we did get our paramedics on board. Week of July 4th, we, July 5th, we went live 24/7. So far, we've been covering 24/7 on a first call out with a, with a paramedic and a partner. The feedback so far that we're getting from the squads around the county, I think is, there's some responders in here tonight. I think they're better able to speak to what they think of it than deserve the consumers of it. But we were very fortunate, we hired Randy Horstley from Lawton, 28-year veteran of EMS. We have Jerry Kelly, he's got about 30 years in EMS. We have, Jerry was with us before. We have Ron Fremont from Whiting is our part-timer. He's got about 10 or 12 years in EMS. And then Miles McCrea from over in Cretchenville, has about eight years in EMS. The feedback we're getting from the physicians at the hospitals, that our medical directors, real positive because we're leaning forward. There's some stroke drugs, some cardiac drugs that the docs like to see the patients have prior to getting to the hospital, and, and we've been able to write protocols and work with our medical directors to add those tools to their arsenal. So we're able to get some of the drugs that they want you to have if you're going to the cath lab, and we can just give you those while we're on the way to the hospital. By the time you get to the hospital, you can go bypass ER and go right straight to the cath lab. So we're very involved in a statewide or nationwide stemming project and the state or national stroke project. Those are two very debilitating things that happen to the human body that time is really sensitive to. So we're very proud of the staff. We're very proud of the whole department leaning forward, not just being the paramedics and the health providers, but trying to get out and grow on the cutting edge of the treatment that we can do because of the distance we travel, so. Questions? Any of the responders in the room? Mary, you see us all the time?
I, I wanna say thank you so much for you guys getting that together. Cause it, it is kinda scary out here in the country in the middle of the night when you have no paramedics. And now, now we do. That's nice. And they do prioritize. You know, if, if they're out on a, on a call where they might not be needed, or they're headed to a call they might not be needed, and someone else comes in with a heart attack or something like that, they will pull off of that and go to the other one. And they, you know, they go through the commissary and stuff and make sure that, that they're going to the highest priority call. Luckily, we haven't had any of those happen, Gary.
We've got a few, we've got a few that we've had to pull off. The nice part about it is if we send one up to people, it still gives us another one available to help out on the next call. So it's been very busy. We've rewritten all the protocols and policies for the whole department and really gone through a huge blitz training thing the last three months. And feel, I feel really proud of where they're at. You know, Jamie works with us all the time, sees us. You guys do over here at Bronson on a regular basis, so. One of our full-time guys, Matt Palmer, is from Bronson, so. But just wanted to update everybody, if you got any concerns or questions, call me. I answer my cell phone 251-1038. I answer 24/7, so. Any issues whatsoever, don't be afraid to call.
Paramedics added about raising a penny in taxes.
That's working board, not me. They're the ones that figure out how to do that. I just brought the meat forward on behalf of the rural responders and. But I know all of us out here that are trying to do this appreciate having the extra help, and thank you.
Mr. Jennings, do you have anything you'd like to add or comment on?
No, we're, we're busy. I mean, a lot of our work, we can't talk about it till after the fact. But crime, it's, it's there. It used to be where we had peaks and valleys. That's no longer there. Five years ago, we saw a decrease in the number of juvenile delinquencies that we were processing. That started to pick up again, and it's just all over. The newer generation just isn't the same as what, what we were. So, so that, that's just there. We have three homicide trials that should be coming up, if not this winter, the first of the year. And we just got a venue transfer of a case out of Dallas County, I believe, that will also be coming to Woodbury in February. And that's a homicide case of, of a child, so. We're gonna be busy, but go with the territory.
Mr. Treger, do you have anything?
Of course I do.
Would you please share?
I will. Hi, I'm Mike Clayton from Woodbury County Treasurer. Usually introduce myself as a evil tax collector, but this year I'm thinking it must be double evil because I'm getting lots of phone calls about taxes going up. Not my fault. Anyway, I'm not as bad as I think I am because I had a fight with my raiser this morning, a raiser won, so. Rocky mentioned earlier about the, the software system that we're changing over to. It's extremely comprehensive system that's gonna cover, already the county and city assessor are on the same system that we're gonna go to. But it'll be everybody, it'll be the recorder, the treasurer, the auditor, ATR department, everybody. And then we'll go to the same system, we'll all be on the same page. It's gonna eliminate so much duplicate work in my office. Should make life a lot easier later down the road. Michelle, Michelle and I go back and forth because I'm dreading the hell out of this thing because I've talked to so many other traders that converted to this software that their first year was just a living nightmare. After that, it gets better, so we're just, I'm looking two years down the road, it's gonna be all sunshine. We're right in the peak of battle right now since tax taxes, now, as you all know, you've probably got your tax statements. If you know anybody that wants to try to budget better, just direct them to the internet, iowapretenders.org site. They can make monthly payments online. The computer automatically calculates what your monthly payment will be. It will send you an email saying, this is what's gonna happen on this date. You can pick the date that the payment's made. If it's the day of, after your social security check comes or whatever, that's fine. It calculates exactly what your past payment's gonna be that month, lets you have an email that says, we took this much out of your, out of your, your checking account or your savings account, whichever you like. It's so easy, so simple, and it's the best way in the world to budget rather than having to come up and say, oh, geez, I owe a thousand dollars this six months, and another six months, I owe another thousand dollars. Break it up into monthly payments. It's real simple, just do it online. We can push that, push that, push that. No, people say, oh, man, I don't do that stuff online. I'd just not say, if you give your credit card to some clown in a restaurant and he goes in the back room and runs that credit card, I can guarantee you're gonna get your stuff stolen much quicker that way than you ever will online. But just give it a try. And even if you don't wanna do it monthly, you can set it up to do your semi-annual payments. You can sit right back, go home tonight, get online, you said, I wanna pay my first half the last, very last day of the month in September. I wanna pay my second half the very last day in March. You can forget about it, it's paid. When that last day comes, it makes the payment. When that last day in March comes, it makes the payment. Done. You don't have to put a stamp on it. You don't have to sit in line in the office. It's just done.
Make sure the money's there.
Huh?
Just make sure the money's there.
And a teaser on our, because you can automatically post to our system. We don't have to. Man, we got tons of mail now already, and we just sent the statements out. So it's just, encourage people to use the online system. just, encourage people to use the online system. We appreciate it. And if you don't know how, call Rocky, so they'll help you.
Is that your direct line?
That is not. But there's a wonderful person there that can help you a lot better than I can, probably.
We have our county assessor.
Hi, Julie Conley. You might see us around right now. We're doing all of our fall work, so you'll see a white Nissan Rogue or a silver Colorado pickup. So we're out doing all of our tailwork this winter, so.
Thank you. Michelle, do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
Um, Michelle Staff, I'm deputy auditor representing Pat Gill, auditor. Pat has three different divisions. I'm the deputy in charge of the finance area, so accounts payable and payroll. I'm also project manager for this technology project that we've been talking about all night. I am very excited about it. It is a scary thing for the county. It's been about 20 years we've been on the same software, so we're long overdue for some of the new. And I think it's going to work well, but it is going to be a two-year period where we're probably going to be about ready to strangle each other for a while. So bear with us if you can. But I do want to say in reference to just your awareness of the county and what goes on is, you're, you're aware that the board has a meeting every Tuesday night at 4:30. I'm not sure if you're all aware, but it is on YouTube Live. So if you're interested, you can go onto YouTube and watch the meeting live if you don't want to come to it. Also, the agenda file is posted in the van, so if you see something that you're interested in, want to have a conversation with the board meeting, we'd be more than happy to be there.
YouTube Live for now.
I think it might stay that way.
Have they got it worked out?
No guarantees, but leaning in that direction.
Mr. Glazer, do you have anything you'd like to add or talk about?
Sure. My name's David Glazer, director of the Community and Economic Development Department of Woodbury County. So I oversee permitting and zoning and floodplain management for unincorporated Woodbury County. I also oversee county's efforts for economic development in rural Woodbury County, as well as providing assistance to municipalities throughout the county as well. Some of the things that we've been working on that I know at least this community's been involved in is the comprehensive planning process. That's something that the board approved funding for a few years back to get all the cities in Woodbury County without a comprehensive plan, or with an older one, given, get that plan updated. And that plan is used for a number of things, but it's really a tool for the city council, myself, and the county to anticipate and plan for growth and development. The city of Hornick just recently, the consultants that are working on putting those plans together just recently finished a draft for the city of Hornick, recently reviewed it, and asked them to go back and revise some parts of the plan, and really make it a document that I think that the city councils will be able to use to make decisions about growth and development. Really analyzing your municipal tax levy, your tax rates, how, and what you're using local option sales tax on, looking at your infrastructure capacities, so you can honestly say whether or not you can serve a new development. Because, you know, everyone would like to say we'd like to bring in new businesses, or we'd like to have, you know, expand our city. But does your, you know, do you have the capacities to serve new developments? And if so, how many? And it helps the council prioritize projects. Like, for example, in Hornick, you know, it's a small town. They've got about five miles of road, quarter mile that's not paved, and so helping them to identify some of their priorities. It's a priority for the, for the city to have paved roads throughout the town. They've got a quarter mile. We've got some preliminary cost estimates of what it would cost to get it paved. And then we can work on looking at the tax rates, grant opportunities, other things, how to get funding, how to pay for some of those projects. So that's pretty exciting. Other than that, I've been working with the city of Sergeant Bluff. We have roughly 120-acre industrial site that's been certified by the state as a shovel-ready site. So we're, the last six months, we've been spending, studying, looking at dirt from Omaha to Sioux Falls in terms of what are other cities pricing industrial ground at, what other sites in the area are, are suited for industrial development. Do they have natural gas? What's, what type of fiber optics and telecommunications infrastructures available? And it's exciting because in Sergeant Bluff, everything is at the site. And so we've been now looking at doing some marketing measures, and how do we position ourselves, you know, against the rest of, rest of the market, and working with the community to get some consensus on what are some of the projects that they would like to see. No sense of bringing them projects that the community's going to be against, and then having that headache, you know, when we're at the negotiation table. So those are some of the things that I think the comprehensive plan will help the community identify, you know, what do you want to look like, what do you want to be in the next 10 to 20 years, and how would we get there. On the zoning and planning side for the county, I'm excited because we recently, the board authorized us to make a purchase of software. The county uses Beacon. If you've ever been online and looked at your property, we use Beacon, GIS, Schneider Corporation to provide that information. And now for building permits, soon we'll be able to submit and receive building permits online. It's for everything outside of the, of the cities, but so if you live outside of, you know, if you live in unincorporated rural Woodbury County, and you want to do, submit your building permit instead of coming down to the county courthouse, you can now do it online. We just got our credit card machine today. We're going to integrate that on, on to Beacon as well, so you can be able to pay online. So we're getting in the 21st, 21st century to kind of keep up with Michelle and Mike. And, yeah, so other than that, there's some other stuff that we're looking at as far as ideas and strategies for economic development out in the county, working with the board on some ideas that I think in the next year, we might be able to leverage ourselves and, you know, try to grow the tax base and create jobs. So if you have any questions, let me know. My office is in the sixth floor downtown courthouse.
Dennis, did I gloss over or omit or?
No, you didn't omit. I didn't really care if you omitted it. But I do have two things that might interest the public here. First one is, the board did approve, or the sheriff promoted this a little bit. We've had some minor problems in jail, things coming into the jail through body cavities. That will not happen anymore because we have personal machines, a body scanner that goes in a circle around you when you come to jail, and we're all outstanding systems here, so you don't have to worry. Our systems are outstanding. They're going to have to go through this when they come to jail, which eliminates any contraband, drugs, anything getting into our jail system. They have had a couple of problems with that because you're limited what you can examine and not examine. The other big issue here is our elections, and Michelle probably didn't know, she knows something about this, but the board did approve the purchase of new election machines. The auditors come back with a bid that's way under what we thought it was going to be. So they won't be using this general election because they got a border to get here. We're replacing the election machines we have with an updated model. And also, there'll be new electronic polling books, which the state's requiring. We do have enough money set aside for that. So there's some major, you know, purchases we've done. They'll be to benefit the public safety and quality of elections. We got good quality of elections already, but they'll be, the standard we've always had is good. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Mobile now just finished up their five-year capital improvement plan. They wanted to have a motion to go ahead and start a second, you know, five-year capital improvement plan. With Highway 20 being completed here in October, we hope to see a lot of traffic, you know, going past our city and also stopping. We have four new businesses on Frontage Road. We also have two businesses that completely refurbished themselves into a bit of an old business, old building into a new building. And so we want to get on their five-year program to get Frontage Road fixed up. Frontage Road now is the original Highway 20. Go back to 1930.
Does that have some kind of historical standing that we can't modify or repaint anything?
We can modify that. Let's try it though.
Wow.
We don't have any, we don't have any signs up, so we're okay.
Yes.
That's vintage highways.
There you go. The original Route 20 through Mobile.
No, it's, it's, we don't have a sign up, so we don't.
Is that the oldest state pork concrete pile?
It is the oldest.
It's the original condition of that concrete pavement association talked about coming out next year and doing a little ribbon cutting on that little section.
Kind of like renewing it now.
Were you cutting the ribbon?
Next year, next year.
That's good, man.
That, that section there, I think next year, it'll be on your floor.
Mr. Clayton, do you remember when that was a gravel section, or was that always based on?
Yeah, I think I remember that, yeah. As a small, small boy, but I mean, I remember that. Rocky, do you? Sure. I'll get you tomorrow.
Mr. Brown, did you have one more thing?
Yeah, just that four-way intersection in Mobile. If you travel that route, be careful. There's a, I don't know, but we're seeing an increase in, especially somebody's running that eastbound stops.
Tonight, I seen it.
Yeah. They're not even shifting gears. They're not hitting the brakes. They're going, especially eastbound, but happens westbound, so. We're just trying to get the word out to everybody. The sheriff's department's been out there trying to monitor the intersection as much as they have time for, but we see it all the time. They don't even change gears when they're coming through there.
Anybody else?
Just going to make one comment. The secondary roads, the route D-54, if you travel that from Odo to Danbury, starting next week, is going to be closed for approximately two months. Homeowners will have access, but for the safety of the workers, it's going to be a hard closure at L-21 and on I-131.
Mr. Reddy?
Also, the Highway 20 corridor plan should be coming to a completion soon. Just the ribbon cutting is expected, uh?
October 19?
Yeah, like two weeks before the election, for some reason. So, but.
Your birdie is on this last.
As long as it happens, yeah. So the, the study is supposed to, is supposed to coincide somewhat with that date, potentially released in December this year.
Good point. Anybody else? Going once? Whoever adjourned, thank you for coming.